Good morning, welcome to City Hall. Before we call our meeting into session, I'd like to have a stand and have Pastor Mark Munchausen from the Messiah Lutheran Church give us an invocation. And then if David Greenwell would lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag, would you all please rise? Pastor, thank you for coming down. Thank you for sharing your life with Oklahoma City. And you're on, sir.
Good morning, thank you. The Vice Mayor asked if I was from Oklahoma, and I said, "No, I grew up in Illinois." And growing up in Illinois, I came to appreciate the man famous for wearing the stovepipe hat, President Abraham Lincoln, and as a pastor, come to appreciate him even more. I want to share before the prayer part of his declaration wherein he declared a national day of prayer back in 1863. He said, "It is the duty of nations as well of men to own their independence upon the overruling power of God, to confess their sins and transgressions in humble sorrow, yet with assured hope that genuine repentance will lead to mercy and pardon, and to recognize the sublime truth announced in the holy scriptures and proven by all history that those nations are only blessed whose God is the Lord. And insomuch as we know that by His divine law nations like individuals are subjected to punishments, chastisements in this world, may we not justly fear that the awful calamity of civil war which now desolates the land may be but a punishment inflicted upon us for our presumptuous sins, to the needful end of our national reformation as a whole people. We have been recipients of the choicest bounties of heaven. We have been persevered through these years in peace and prosperity. We have grown in numbers, wealth, and power as no other nation has ever grown, but we have forgotten God." And then he continues later, "It behooves us then to humbly confess ourselves before the offended power, to confess our national sins, to pray for clemency and forgiveness." And then he declared the 30th day of March 1963 as a national day of prayer. And so we do bow and pray. Father, we do humbly come before you this day and lift up our nation, our state, and our city, and all our elected officials. We confess our failures, our disunity, our need for your guidance and your wisdom. We pray especially this morning for your blessing upon our President Barack Obama, our Governor Mary Fallon, and our Mayor Mick Cornet and our City Council. May they work that they do be pleasing in your eyes and allow peace and prosperity to thrive in our city, our state, and our nation. We pray this in the name of the Prince of Peace, Christ our Savior. Amen.
Amen. Please face the flag. Against to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor, for coming. You may be seated. First item we have in calling the meeting to order is to talk about a proclamation dealing with Patriot's Day. And if Allen McDonald and Jeff Twihouse and his group will come forward, I'll meet them down there, and the clerk will read the proclamation.
Whereas the City of Oklahoma City has a military leave policy in place that conforms to federal and state statutes and supports its employees serving in the United States Armed Forces. Whereas Jerry Johnson has been employed by the Utilities Department Line Maintenance Division for 11 years, but only, quote, "on the ground," end quote, in Oklahoma City for seven years. Whereas during the remaining four years with the city, Sergeant First Class Jerry Johnson served the United States of America during three tours of duty in support of Operation Noble Eagle, Operation Iraqi Freedom, and Operation Enduring Freedom in Afghanistan. Whereas while on active duty, Sergeant Johnson served the country without worry about his employment with the city, which allowed him to focus solely on his responsibilities to the United States of America. Whereas to show his appreciation of his employer's support, Sergeant Jerry Johnson nominated Allen McDonald, Line Maintenance Superintendent, and Jeff Twihouse, Line Maintenance Fleet Manager, for the prestigious Patriot Award. Whereas the National Committee for Employer Support of the Guard conducts the Patriot Award Program to recognize employers who practice leadership and personnel policies that fully support employee participation in the Oklahoma National Guard and Reserve, including continuing employment, salaries, and benefits. Whereas Allen McDonald and Jeff Twihouse are recipients of the Patriot Award and represent the spirit in which the city's military leave policy was instituted in their support of one of Oklahoma City's own. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim July 17, 2012, as Good Patriots' Day in Oklahoma City.
Let's have a round of applause for Jeff and Allen, if you would. This is kind of a curveball. Would either of you gentlemen like to say a word?
I'd like to say that how proud we are of Jerry and what he's done, not only here with the city, but certainly with his three tours in the Guard, and we'd like to take some credit for you too, Jerry, and thank you very much for your service.
Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Despain, and I'm State Chairman of ESGR. It's a Department of Defense organization staffed mainly by volunteers to recognize primarily employers who provide support above and beyond that which is required by the law. As all of us in this room know that America's Defense Forces are comprised totally of volunteers, and about 46 percent of those volunteers are in the Guard and the Reserve. And so we depend on these guys a whole lot for our nation's freedoms and rights that we have. And so part of this is to recognize those employers that go above and beyond the letter of the law to offer a hand of friendship to their guardsmen and reservists that serve all of us in our nation. And we've got a couple of certificates that we'd like to present to these guys in recognition of that.
Well, thank you very much. And really, the thanks should go to our citizens who support very actively what our reservists and our Guard people do. Sergeant, come here a minute, sir. Say a few words. You're the real hero here.
I'm no hero by any means. I just wanted to give thanks to my employers for what they do. I know we get a lot of credit, but sometimes they tend to forget the credit that's due back home as well, so that was the reason for nominating. Thank you.
Thank you all, and thank you for what you've done in going out to protect our freedom and lay your life on the line that we might have freedom. May God bless you and your future. Thank you all. Thank you all for coming down. All right, as you all can tell, our mayor is in New York on business. He's attending a conference dealing with parks and is going to be involved in a discussion today about the future of parks in our nation, so I'll be filling in for him. Where we are right now, from the office of the mayor, we have three appointments. Your motion is second, and the appointments are so moved. Next up is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for July 3 and 10, and to approve the Journal of Proceedings for June 19. Your motion is second. Cast your votes, and it is so ordered. Next up is uncontested continuances. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Vice Mayor, there are two listed on the agenda and beyond that. On page six, under the Consent Docket, Item 6X is an emergency contract. We need to defer that for two weeks because that requires seven votes, and there are only six votes here this morning. So that's Item 6X. We'd like to defer that until July 31st. Moving on to page 21, under Unsecured Items, Item 8L1, Item B, 3815 Flynn, who has to that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item E, 3637 West Liberty, who has to that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item H, 1 Pen Tree Drive, who has to that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item J, 3013 North Utah, who has to that be stricken, owner has secured. Item N, 414 Southeast 16th, who has to that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item P, 1538 Northeast 20th, who has to that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item S, 1025 Southwest 33rd, who has to that be stricken, the owner has secured. And Item Y, 720 Northwest 47th Street, who has to that be stricken, again, the owner has secured. And then under Claims for Denial, that's on page 24, page 24, Item 8V1A, that needs to be stricken. We're going to do some further investigation on that item. Again, that's Item 8V1A, the claim of DMC Enterprises. And then Item 8V1D, that needs to be deferred until July 31st. Again, that's 8V1D until July 31st.
Thank you, Mr. Couch. Moving along, it's time to recess the council meeting and to convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority with three items. We have a motion? We have a motion is second? Any discussion?
You are on the MFA one, or A, pardon me. This is a preliminary report on its drainage work out in the West Nichols Hills tract. There is some interest out there in some participation by some of the citizens in improving some of the streets out there. Just wanted to point that out, that this might want to be coordinated with their interest.
Thank you. Councilman Greenwell, would you like to?
No, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I have to end this section.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion is second. Cast your votes, and it is so ordered. Let's adjourn. OC, MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority for items. Your motion is second. You're on, sir.
The first item is Item A, the Request for Proposals with Respect to the Utilization of Design Study for the Civic Center Music Hall. It doesn't seem like it was that long ago that there was some major remodeling inside the Civic Center. Am I wrong on that? And will this continue with that, or?
This is a joint project with the Civic Center Foundation, who is raising some funds for the building and the city staff. I think it's a 50-50 match on it. To go forward, to take and look at the building, it's been 12 years, 11 years since the Civic Center has been reopened now, and to take a look at some of the improvements that need to be done. Amongst those are the Little Theater that's hanging out there that does have some challenges with it. And so we're trying to identify what needs to be done to assist them in scoping out some projects if they can do some private fundraising.
So the remodeling that took place, say, back in the '90s, I can't remember the exact date, where they added some suites and things like that?
I mean, we totally redid the facility and reopened it in '01 or '02. I don't remember the exact date. That was an original MAPS project.
So this is just a continuation, or?
Yeah, this is really to take a look at some of the, not the hall itself, per se, but some of the other spaces, and hopefully identify some opportunities for the foundation to help participate, do some improvements.
One of the reasons why I bring it up is, you know, at times this past year, projects have came forward for approval, and it seems like not all of us were familiar that we were even looking at some of those items. So I just wanted to address this upfront.
Yes, Councilman Ryan.
Honestly, I'd like to point out, when that project was done back 12 years ago, it was over budget, and there were some significant things deleted from the work out there that may be be able to pick up this time. And secondly, any building like that that is open to the public, used so constantly, 10 or 12 years is a long time between remodeling. So if we do point out some things that need to be done, they may be just wear and tear items.
If I can also add to that, I've just been appointed to the Civic Center Foundation Board, and so we did discuss this in our recent board meeting. And as Councilman Ryan pointed out, there were, this project, as it was a MAPS project, was over budget and ran out of money before we were able to address the pretty Little Theater, which is one that I think remains basically in the condition it was back in 1937. And there are some other areas of the building that aren't being utilized to the greatest capacity. And so this is really as much a utilization study to kind of look at the footprint of the building and recognize that we're doing all this work in the gardens outside. Now, they're not coupled together, but, you know, look at those two things and really develop a master plan, how we might better utilize the space, and then identify things that need to be done that potentially would lead to a private fundraising campaign to help develop the rest of the facility. Does that make sense? Okay. Thanks.
Yes, go ahead, Josh.
I do have another item to bring up, and that's the Item C. C, the Business Improvement District on Northwestern between Northwest 36th Street and Northwest Since we addressed this, an issue somewhat related to this the last time we met, I just think it's important to look at these items. I think it's a great idea. I think Business Improvement District. And Jim, how long has this particular bid been in place? A couple of years at least?
Oh, it's more than that, but I can't give you the exact number, but Steph, I'm sure Planning Department will be able to come in and?
Well, the point is, I think that's, that area has a lot of potential for continued development in the area of retail and restaurants and things like that, and I would encourage this. One of the problems, though, is when you're successful with a bid district, you'll just attract additional traffic. And I know that was a concern when we were looking at another matter two weeks ago, but having traffic along Western Avenue doesn't necessarily mean that that'll also increase the traffic inside the neighborhoods that surround this area. So just wanted to continue that discussion, and all traffic isn't bad. It's often a sign for growth and development from a commercial or retail perspective, and I think that's what we want here in Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Greenwell. Any further discussion? We do have a motion is second. Cast your votes, and it is so approved. Time to adjourn the OCPPA, and reconvene as the council with the Consent Docket. Your motion is second. Are there any individual considerations?
I had two items, if I could, Mayor. I'd like to mention 6P and 6AY.
6P and 6AY. Any others?
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to discuss Item A.
Item A, yes, sir. Okay. I'd see no others. Councilwoman, if you would stop, please, ma'am.
Thank you. Mayor, I'm trying to get to that number here. Item 6P is something I just wanted to make sure was heard out in the public. This is a Request for Proposals that we're going to be issuing to advertise for redevelopment opportunities for the Old City Jail. And, you know, this is the facility that's located at 200 North Chertel. The building was part of a comprehensive plan that goes back to the '30s, and it was completed in 1940. It was our city jail for many years. It's been vacant essentially since the '80s, when the new county jail was constructed. We've got about 2,000 feet of it occupied. It's a very interesting historic structure from the outside. It's complicated on the inside, and so I just, we're going to go ahead and see if there's some opportunities to redevelop that, and I just wanted to make note that it was, that RFP was going out.
Mayor, if I might add to that, I really appreciate the fact that we're looking at that. You know, it was one of the four buildings, there were four buildings built, the WPA projects built during the late '30s and '40s, and it was the fourth building. The Civic Center, this building, the County Courthouse, and that building were all built in the old railroad right away. And so the idea that we're making an effort to try to preserve that is, I too want to second the idea that we're making a long, hard look to try to preserve that building.
Thank you, sir. Next item.
Great. And my second item was 6AY, and just kind of moving forward, there's so many exciting things going on with MAPS 3, but I just wanted to bring to the listening public's attention anyway, that this is a resolution approving our contract with Hargraves and Associates for the master plan of the park. And it's a very exciting step forward. Excited to see this happening.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Greenwell.
Thank you. Item A, still new at this. Item A is contract award and approval for a self-propelled asphalt lay-down machine for $251,000. And while I agree with this conceptually, the fact that we can hopefully reduce the overall expenses of repairing our streets with this acquisition, and at times be able to address needs on a quicker basis than if we had to go out and get bids from private contractors to address certain situations. I do, and this is where we get into more of a policy issue than a specific item perspective, hope that we will continue to try to improve the quality of work when we take on a job, let's say, in-house. The reason I bring this particular item up is when resurfacing was performed along Pennsylvania Avenue in South Oklahoma City, first from I-240 north to Southwest 59th Street, and then from Southwest 59th Street north to 44th Street. Last fall, I was contacted by a non-contractor who questioned the quality of the resurfacing job. And the point I'm just trying to make is, if we take something on ourselves and it's not performed at the same level of quality that we would expect from an outside contractor to perform, I don't know if our analysis is very accurate, if we say we're saving monies, if, for example, with this resurfacing, if we've let spots on the street exposed, that's going to allow water to seep inside and reduce the overall life of that resurfacing job. So when we take into, to those issues into account, we may not be saving money. So all I'm saying is that I hope we encourage the continued improvement in the quality of any job we take on ourselves, as opposed to letting it out to a contractor. Again, in theory, I understand the benefits of obtaining this machine, overall reduced costs, and possibly quicker response time to certain areas that need assistance, but I think we need to always try to uphold the same quality of work that we would expect from outside contractors. Thank you.
Councilman, I couldn't agree more. And obviously, we did have some problem in the quality of some oil on a microsurface project that we did last year that's been corrected. All construction, there's a tendency for work that doesn't go quite right, both on the private side and the public side. Once on the private side, we make them correct the work, and when it's on the public side, they like to point it out to the councilman, so.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion? Your motion is second on the Consent Docket. Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Concurrent Docket.
Move with the motion.
Your motion is second. Are there any individual considerations?
Just a quick question. One of those projects deals with some workout at the fairgrounds, ADA work. Is that all being paid for by the hotel and motel sales tax?
Yes. No, I'm sorry, the hotel and motel tax, yes.
Thank you.
And my standard question about that is, are we getting close to finishing the five-year plan?
They are, and the same answer is yes, they're on schedule to complete it.
Okay. This is your six.
Okay.
We have a motion is second. Are there any further discussion in the Concurrent Docket? Seeing none, cast your votes, and it is approved. Okay, starting off, let's see, with 8A1, a SPUD 666, at 4600 South Anderson Road, from Double Way Agriculture and AE2 Airport and Barnes Overway to a new Spud 666. Ward four. Councilman White.
Are there any, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this? Hearing none. Are the, all the conditions have been met, Randy? You've agreed to do everything that the Planning Commission and the staff asked you to do? All those are done?
Yes, I'm Randy Hill, representing the applicant, which is Jeff Moore and the Moore family. And I believe we've actually taken care of the one person who wrote a letter recently. We met with them, and I believe they're fine with this point.
Is this the Jeff Moore, the?
I'm sorry.
Is this the Jeff Moore, the councilman from Midwest City?
This is the Jeff Moore, the councilman from Midwest City.
Good, I'm glad to see he's investing his money in Oklahoma City.
Yeah. This was his father's property and had been their family for many years.
Right. I move approval.
I'm sorry, Councilman, did you make a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Is there someone here to speak on this issue? I see a gentleman down here looking eagerly. No? Okay. We have motion is second. Having no further, cast your votes, and it is approved. Thank you, Councilman White.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Spud 669, 3105 Northeast 63rd Street, from an I-2 moderate industrial district to Spud 669, Ward 7. Do we have anybody who's been asked by Councilman Kelly to get involved with this? Seeing none, where's the council's?
Is everybody here to speak against it?
Nobody has signed up?
Have the TEs been agreed to?
Yes, there's no protest. It's a construction company, they need a batch plant to help their operations.
Okay. I'll move approval.
Your motion is second. Any discussion? Cast your votes, and it is approved. Thank you, Councilman Mars. Next up is Item C, as Item B has been deferred. An ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval of the closing of a portion of a platted alley in Ward 6.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I see that David Box is here, representing the owner. David, do you want to just tell us a little bit about what we're doing here? I think this is just an issue to consolidate some property.
Correct. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is a closing application that is also filed in conjunction with a spud. Our clients own on both sides of this alley, and what they're hoping to do is close this, and the spud application will come on later this month. and the spud application will come on later this month to redevelop this property and turn it into a commercial industrial type of use and lease it out. Now, there was one issue with the closing application. The north five feet of our requested closing needs to be removed because there are city sewer facilities in that north five feet. So the portion we're closing is everything minus the north five feet.
Thank you, David. I did have a note about the fact that we do need to amend the motion to delete the north five feet to accommodate an existing sewer. This is a consolidation request by Alan Vinita Munze, who's done so much great work over in West Lawn Gardens addition. I would move approval with the amendment to delete the north five feet.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? No one has signed up, is that correct, Francis? Please cast your votes, and it is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Next up is item E, which is the, D, I'm sorry, okay. Oh, yeah. D, confirming the assessment role for the Business Improvement District on Western Avenue. We do have one person who has indicated a desire to speak on this, so why don't we start, if it's okay with the council, for that gentleman to come forward? Chris Paparonas, if that's correct?
You get an A.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you would state your name and your address, and then object to the council, we'd love to hear from you.
My name is Chris Paparonas. I reside at 36004 Northwest 47th. I own the property at 4309 to 4313 Northwestern. A lot of people call it the Sepango Building. The building is now half-empty, but I am being assessed and have been assessed for a number of years, about $500 or $600. My wife was keeping records. I have absolutely no idea who's getting my money. I never have received a receipt. I've never seen a list of expenditures, receipts. I don't know how the property is assessed. I have tried several times. I saw a banker at IBF Bank, I believe, about two or three years ago. I talked to a gentleman that's on the committee that owns the cleaners. I have received absolutely nothing. I know nothing about the meetings. Now, I'm kind of shooting from the hip here because a lot of these things have just been piled up on me. I don't know how the assessments are determined. I have a long frontage, but a very shallow building. My neighbors have a very shallow frontage, but a deep building. Now, am I paying more because of my frontage, or are they paying, you know, more? I don't know. Nobody has bothered to tell me. I also found out just this morning, talking to my only tenant there, that he is paying about $150 a year to a Western Avenue Business Association, which advertises and promotes tourism and stuff like that. What's going on? I don't know. And that's why I'm protesting. But I found out if I don't pay, they're going to put a lien on my property if I ever decide to sell it. Tell me, I don't know.
Thank you, Chris. Chris Vargas here, and I think if he could step up and talk to us a little about that.
I'm having a real difficulty, by the way, hearing y'all.
Chris Vargas with our planning department is going to answer a couple of your questions.
Good morning.
Are you with the association, sir?
No, I'm with the planning department, and I do the bid management work. Heather Griswold is the association manager. And I need to connect you with her if you're not getting information about what the bid does. But they basically, they do security services, they do marketing services, and special events to increase the profile of Western Avenue and try and bring business and make it a more special place. But you should be notified of events, and you should be aware of where your bid money's going. It is basically done on a formula based on frontage. So I'd be happy to, yes, frontage, and I'd be happy to talk with you further and get Heather involved with you, so you understand at least what it's for.
I would appreciate this being deferred until I find out, because I can't see paying frontage when somebody's got a narrow front and a deep deal that has a lot of.
Sir, if you would, would you mind coming to the microphones, because we're on tape? Thanks, Chris.
See, if it's done by frontage, I've got to say, I've got a wide front, but a very, very shallow depth. Next door to me is a Japanese restaurant that's got not as wide a front, but about a block and a half deep for parking. Across the street, at the Will Rogers', they don't have as wide a deal, but they have a deep deal and then a huge parking lot in back. Now, am I paying more because of my frontage? Is the square footage based on this building size or the property size?
When a bid's set up, they do an assessment methodology, and there's a number of ways a bid's can do that, but I believe Western Avenue's is on frontage.
Okay. See, I don't think that's fair, personally. Secondly, who pays and how much? I've never seen who is assessed, how much they're paying. Do they assess the churches along Western Avenue?
Churches are exempt.
Exempt, okay. But then, how far do they go? And personally, I have yet to really see very much improvement. I see some street lamps. They said they're supposed to put some kind of receptacles for waste. I haven't seen that. Security, I was talking to my tenant, and he said, well, every now and then, he sees a guy drive by in a security car, but he parks behind one of the property owners down the street and sits there for several hours. Who is the secretary? How do they determine who hires the secretary? How do they determine who pays it? Why? I not get any information on meetings or anything like that, since I'm paying. This is my, sir.
Let me, okay, I think we've heard, some people have been telling me some things. We're going to have to defer item 8E anyway, which deals with the ordinance on final hearing, adopting and ratifying the assessment role. Is that correct, due to lack of counsel?
Because we only have six votes.
Because we only have six votes. And since this has come up, what I'd suggest, if it's okay with the council, is we consider deferring 8D also for two weeks to allow staff and to allow the Western Avenue folks to get with Chris and answer his questions and see where we need to go from there.
So moved.
Thank you.
It's a motion to defer in a second. Any further discussion? Thank you for coming down, Chris. Seeing none, cast your votes, and the item is deferred for two weeks. Two weeks. July 31st. Thank you all. All right, moving along then. Do we need to vote on AD, Kenny, or just?
Just vote to defer it.
Okay. Do I get a motion to defer AD? We have a motion? And a second? Cast your votes, and AD is deferred two weeks to July 31st. Next on the agenda is item 8F, ordinance on final hearing relating to the ambulance code.
This is the third time we've heard this, and this talks, this modernizes the language regarding total care.
We have a motion to second. Is there any discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is so approved. 8G, ordinance relating to building and building regulations. 8G1, we have to vote these separately, correct, Francis?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. 8G1.
And 8G1 is a, adopts the International Energy Conservation Code, and we had a presentation on that two weeks ago by Bob Teener's folks that were here. And this is the public hearing phase, so this is the second of the three times that this will come to council.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is so ordered. 8G2, resolution requiring the need for the adoption of the International Energy Conservation Code. What is the council's preference here? Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Question. That's, okay, forget it. I think I've answered my own question.
Please cast your votes, and it is so ordered. Item 8K, public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. 8H.
Yeah, that's next.
Okay, here we go. I'm sorry, excuse me, 8H. Trying to get this meeting moving. One of the ways to do it is to skip items, but they caught me, so.
Mr. Vice Mayor, 8H is the public hearing, so it's the second time we've heard it. And this is the sustainability standards for the HP districts. And there was a presentation on this two weeks ago, and again, this is the second of three times this will come to council.
Have we had any feedback from people who live in the historic districts regarding the implementation of this particular set of policies?
Susan, did you hear that? The question. Have we had feedback regarding, from citizens regarding these proposed ordinances?
We have not over the past two weeks. We've not had any feedback. We've had, over the past year and a half, we've worked with the neighborhoods a lot and received a lot of feedback over that timeframe, but nothing new over the past two weeks.
And during that review period, the year and a half you worked with the citizens, was the acceptance fairly general across the board? Was the majority of people in favor of these things?
Yes, in favor and very interested, especially how it would relate to windows.
Thank you.
Last week in the presentation, there was one of the slides, it was, it may even been two slides, as to all the public meetings and public participation that they'd had available over the last year plus on this.
I wasn't questioning, you know, the public meetings. I was curious about the outcome, whether this was adopted over some serious objections or was basically accepted. And I got the impression that it's been basically accepted.
Thank you, Susan.
Move the item.
We have a motion to move. Second. Any further discussion? Cast your votes, and it is so ordered. Item 8H2, resolution for appearing the preservation guidelines and standards for the Oklahoma City Historic Districts and adopting the Oklahoma City Historic Preservation Design and Sustainability Standards and Guidelines.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? And it is so ordered. 8I, public hearing regarding ordinance relating to personnel and retirement systems and amending the Oklahoma City Municipal Code. Would you like to speak to that, Mr. Couch?
Again, this was introduced at the last meeting. It's modernizing the code and bringing up the current standards. And Renee Hutton is here with the retirement system to answer any questions you may have.
Motion to second. Are there any questions? Seeing none? It is so ordered. Now, item J, dealing with motorized off-road vehicle permits.
This is the final hearing on that issue. This is something that was brought forth, I think, by the users out at Lake Draper, and they want to really self-impose higher fees upon themselves so that those monies could be used to do further improvements out on the facilities.
It's worked very well. It's a great product. It's a great system. It's really worked well. So they want to raise it. I'm all for it. I move approval.
We have a motion to approve. Second. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is so approved. Thank you, Councilman White. Now, we'll go to 8K, public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here to speak to any item under 8K dilapidated structures? Seeing none? We have a motion to second, and it is so declared. Item 8L, public hearing dealing with unsecured structures. Is there anyone here to speak to any item under 8L? Seeing none? We have a motion to second. Cast your votes, and it is so ordered. Item 8M, resolution approving the Second Amendment to the June 14th, 2011 City Council Resolution approving certain fire sales tax expenditures.
Yes, and Mr. Vice Mayor, there was an error in the original resolution, and this $20,000 error, so that's correcting that error.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is so ordered. Item 8M, 8N, public hearing issuing the bonds by the Public Finance Authority on behalf of Arrow Oklahoma LLC at Will Rogers World Airport.
Jamie, do you want to talk to us about this a little bit? Jamie. Blocker's here from the Attorney for the Airport Trust.
Jamie Blocker from the Municipal Counselor's Office. This is a hearing being held at the request of Arrow Oklahoma LLC. They are refinancing some bonds that were previously issued in 2003. There is a package, they're combining some bond issues at several airports across the country into a single bond issue. Wells Fargo Bank will be the trustees for those bonds. If there's any specific questions for Arrow term, their general counsel is present in the audience.
Thank you, Jamie. Motion to second. We have a question, Mr. Ryan.
Has this process been used for other similar institutions at the airports? Where we help finance a private operation?
Not since I've been out there, but I understand previously, there was a Tupper hearing that was done previously on certain private bonds being issued for financing buildings on public property. The IRS regulations require that a Tupper hearing be held just so that there is a public forum in case the public has questions regarding the bond issues. These are private bonds.
We don't have any financial interest in this, but it is on land that is owned by the, by the City and Airport Trust. So that's our hook into this, is that it's financing on public property.
And so if the issue of the bonds defaults, there's cease and no obligation on the city?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And this, these bonds are taxable bonds? They're not tax-exempt bonds, since the benefit is to a private user?
I believe they will be tax-exempt bonds, is my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a motion in a second. Any further questioning? Seeing none, cast your votes, and it is so ordered. Next up is item O, ground lesser consent to the third-party financing agreement on the same transaction. Second. We have a motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none? And it is so ordered. Item P is a revocable right-of-way use permit for the Wandering Ware LLC to hold the Mustache Bash. Is there anyone here representing that particular? Okay, here we go.
Hello. I'm Allison Bailey. My address is 2813 Northwest 46th Street. I'm representing Shopgood. They are doing business as Shopgood, also known as Wandering Ware LLC on the permit. On behalf of Shopgood, I would like to invite the city council and all of the citizens watching to Shopgood's annual Mustache Bash on August 9th. This is an event that benefits Positive Tomorrow's, a great local charity. It also announces Shopgood's annual partnership with Positive Tomorrow's, where a portion of the proceeds from certain items in their store will benefit Positive Tomorrow's year round. Expect great music from local musicians, Ninth Street businesses, food, and Mustache Bash-themed activities for families. Thank you for your support of this event.
Thank you.
You didn't bring us mustaches. We can't go.
Oh, yes. Positive Tomorrow's will have mustaches available for everyone.
I move approval of the event.
We have a motion to approve. And a second. Thank you for coming down now. Please cast your votes, and it is so approved.
A question. This is, it deals with Ninth Street between Broadway Avenue and the Burlington Northern Center, right away. Do we have any, any rules from the, or do we require any approval from the railroad to do this sort of thing?
No, indeed. We're only shutting down our portion of the street. That's just the, that's just the boundary.
Okay, item Q, a resolution approving the MAPS 3 Oklahoma River Improvement Projects requirements. Have we have a presentation on this?
We do. Mike Myers is with us today, and as Mike's coming up and getting set up for the presentation, I'd ask that he keep Mike and his family in your prayers this week. Mike lost his father over the weekend, and in a meeting with Mike yesterday, Mike said that his dad was looking down upon him, and his dad would want him to continue on. So our thoughts are with Mike and his family.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming today and.
City Manager Couch is absolutely right. My mother is also telling me I need to be here, so it's, I appreciate your sentiments. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, council members, manage your couch. I'm here today to talk about the project requirements documents for Phase Two of the Oklahoma River Improvements. Just as a brief background, these project requirements are going to be provided for two reasons primarily. One is as guidelines for any architect or engineer that is selected to perform work on any of these project, on any of these projects for Phase Two. And it provides a summary and a guideline also for the MAPS 3 subcommittees, the Citizens' Advisory Committee, and for the City Council. We used a number of different sources. We used our consultants. We used input from the subcommittee. We collected data from other sources. We've worked very closely with the Boathouse Foundation to make sure that what we're doing is compatible with the overall vision for the river improvements. The document itself consists of background description, site description and analysis, space descriptions where that's appropriate. In this case, it's a, these are, this is an eclectic group of projects that's going to be undertaken, design considerations, and. to be undertaken, design considerations, and most importantly, budget and schedule. You may recall there are four phases for the river improvements themselves. This is a brief summary of each of those phases. We're, these project requirements deal specifically with Phase Two, and which consist of a number of varied projects, including starting systems, starting docks, judging platforms, LED lighting, cameras, buoy markers, timing huts, crossover markers, other infrastructure for electronic and fiber connectivity, sound, and gateway enhancements. This is the budget, overall budget for all of the river improvements. Phase Two is broken out there, as all the other projects have been, by design, construction, contingency, and other components of the budget, and the schedule as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions, provide additional information, as you wish.
Yes, sir, Pat.
Just a quick question, Mike. Was there any discussion in course of your investigation of providing some kind of a public eating facility, restaurant, coffee shop kind of thing in that area?
That really isn't part of this project requirements documents, but that will be a part of the Whitewater discussions, and has always been planned for the Whitewater facility, assuming there's sufficient budget for the course itself and the required improvements. A restaurant, some sort of food service facility would be provided as part of the Whitewater facility.
Is the Whitewater facility's location, has that been formed yet?
It hasn't been finalized, but there's a study ongoing right now, and will be a study going to determine that it is, in fact, suitable to be located at the far eastern end of what's generally referred to as Boathouse Row, adjacent to I-35 on the south side of the river. ADG did a very preliminary study that shows that there is enough space there to do it. It's a little bit difficult site because there are some significant sewer lines. You may be familiar, there's some OG&E lines, which we've been working with OG&E on, but it is, the site can be used for that purpose. And in fact, there were interviews yesterday and Friday for a design consultant for the Whitewater facility, and I think we'll be bringing you the results of those interviews in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Mike.
Just a quick question, though. Outside of the MAPS projects, the Boathouse Foundation could identify a restaurant partner and could do something?
That's always a possibility, yes. And to follow up on Councilman Ryan's question, Mike did allude that we conducted interviews the last two days with, to try to select a consultant for the Whitewater facility, and although that site has some challenges, all four of the firms that we interviewed did talk about specifics having to do with the site, and we do believe that that's going to be a suitable site.
We do need a place where you can get a cup of coffee or grab a sandwich or something down there on the river, so want to encourage folks to take a look at that opportunity.
We will.
Any further questions or comments from the council?
I guess, Larry, may I just make a comment, and this is way out of the box, but Dennis, you're in the hot seat, so I'm going to go ahead. I've had some feedback recently from visitors that have gone down to the river, bringing out-of-town guests, and had a lot of trouble figuring out where to go to do things, where to go to rent kayaks, where to go to do things, and so talking about signage and, you know, how do you rent, how do you buy a ticket for the Devon boats? And I think we've got these fabulous facilities, but it would be helpful if maybe we could hone in a little bit on helping the visitor figure out how to use them.
The Boathouse Foundation is responsible for those activities, and I'll be glad to visit with Mike Knopf, who's the Director of the Boathouse Foundation, about getting some more information out to the public, maybe increasing the signage so that those issues are more easily identifiable.
Great, and he's generally here. I didn't see him today, but just, if you would pass on those comments, that'd be great.
Do we have a, do we have a motion and a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further questioning? Mike, thank you for coming. Our prayers go out to you and your family. Please cast your votes. And it is so approved. Next on the agenda is item 8R1, authorizing the Minister of Counselor to settle a judgment. Kenny, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, this was for delinquent hotel tax, and we believe based upon the financial documents we've been able to obtain, including tax returns, that this is about all that Mr. Khan is good for. We do have a judgment, but this would settle the judgment with him for that particular amount. If council has any additional questions, we could do an executive session on it.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
A second? Any further questions? Thank you, Kenny. Cast your votes. And it is so ordered. Item S, do we need executive session on this one, sir?
Executive session on?
Item S?
Yes, item S, yes, indeed. We do need an executive session on that particular one.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to move to executive session. It is so moved. Item T, we need executive session on it also.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. And it is so moved. Item U, do we need an executive session on item U?
He keeps asking me questions. No, we do not.
That's all we need. We have a motion and a second to strike it. Please cast your votes. And it is so struck. Claims recommended for denial, item 8V. Is there anyone here to speak to any item under 8V? We've already taken care of two of the four items. Remaining two then, B and C. What is the council's?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. And it is so ordered. Item 9A, claims recommended for approval. Three items. Anyone here to speak on any item under 8, on item 9A?
We got it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. And it is so ordered. Item 10, items from council. Let's start with Chief Morris.
Just a quick note on the luncheon yesterday where former Mayor Ron Norick received the Vision Award from Sister Cities. Well-deserved and well-attended. My congratulations go out to him. That's all.
I, just a little personal announcement. My granddaughter had a little baby boy on Wednesday, and I'm now a great-grandfather, a little redheaded boy. So, they're back home in Chickasha and doing very well.
You've always been a great-grandfather. This just makes it official, sir. Thank you, Pete. Councilman Ringel.
Just a couple of quick things. Our myriad gardens is really blossoming into this wonderful downtown community center. Last week, we had two events in the evening outdoors. We had a concert Tuesday night with Kyle Dillingham, and there were probably 350 or 400 people out on the lawn enjoying some fantastic music. And Wednesday night, the Mary Gardens Foundation has started a series of movies outdoors. On Wednesday night, I got to see one of my favorite movies ever, Ferris Bueller's Day Off, and tomorrow night, they're going to be showing Shrek outdoors. Starts at nine o'clock. There were families just filling up the space with picnic baskets and blankets. It was really a nice evening, so I would encourage everybody to look at the schedule and attend those movies. I'd like to thank the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. A number of us were in attendance at a luncheon meeting the other day that discussed the 2010 census data and the changing demographics in our community. I thought it was extremely interesting and provided some really valuable information for everything from, you know, planning for our school district and other things. And I did want to also recognize Mayor Norick for being honored by Sister Cities. We have the Vice Mayor, Oklahoma City has seven Sister City relationships. The most recent one, that agreement that was signed was in 2010 with Kigali, Rwanda, and we have the Vice Mayor of Kigali here in Oklahoma City visiting along with their intaissé from their Chamber of Commerce. They'll be making a presentation at the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City today at noon, but it's a very wonderful relationship. There's some additional partnerships involved. Terri Nissus Organization, the Institute for Economic Empowerment of Women, has been working both in Rwanda and in Afghanistan for a number of years. And Oklahoma Christian University, under Mike O'Neill's leadership, has had students from Rwanda, and it really is making an impact on their country and has, I think, an important connection to Oklahoma City. So, great work is being done out of Sister Cities, and I want to thank Kathy Williams, who chairs that organization on our end, for doing such a good job.
Thank you. Councilman Ryan.
Thank you, Hon. Just one item, and this is something that's been before the council before, I think. We've had some discussion on it, but the railroad crossing between Broadway and I-235 on 10th Street is, if not the roughest crossing in the city, it probably would rank right up there among them. And I wonder if there's anything we can do to that, because as Broadway develops, that particular artery is going to carry more and more traffic, and it's a very rough crossing, and it would discourage people from using 10th Street, which is a great access off of the 235 into Broadway and Harvey Alley.
Councilman, we've been in discussions and basically pleading with the Burlington Northern for the last probably four or five years to do something with that crossing. I think they made some minor improvements maybe a couple of years ago, and it made it a little better, but it is still very, very rough. They will, they need to do the work. They will not allow the city to do the work. We've had some discussions with the Municipal Counselor's Office and about whether or not we could actually go in there and do that work and then charge the Burlington Northern for it. We were discouraged from doing that. So, I have a contact that I've been in contact with many times over the last four or five years, and will continue to try to get them to address that. They're very aware of it.
Does the Corporation Commission have any authority to require the railroads to improve their crossings to some minimum standard?
Yes, I believe so, and I believe we did a similar proceeding at the Corporation Commission a few years ago that had to do with the Walnut Bridge, and basically it would take a proceeding, I believe, at the Corporation Commission. Craig Keith would know all the details and everything. He's gone today, but I believe that's what it requires.
Have we ever filed an application or done anything with the Corporation Commission regarding this particular crossing?
Not, not that I'm aware of with this particular property.
Thank you, Pat. It is really a problem, and Dennis, I would request that you provide me that contact information. I might make some additional inquiries as to whether or not we can do that, and if there are any activity there, I think I would recommend that we go ahead and file some kind of a motion with the Corporation Commission.
Glad to.
Representing Ward III, I'd like to make just a few comments. I've been out of town the last two weeks in the Los Angeles, California area, headquartering in Burbank, and yesterday morning, a reporter asked me for some observations, and this was my response. We are truly blessed to live in Oklahoma City right now. God's blessings are upon us, and we have great things to be thankful for. There are a number of cities in our country that are suffering severe challenges right now, and just in spending time out there every morning reading the Los Angeles Times, I was struck again about how blessed we are not to have the financial difficulties, the corruption challenges, and the lack of decorum and behavior on the part of the government officials. So, I just wanted to pass that along as an observation, and it's nice to be back in Oklahoma City. Nice to be back among people like you all, men and women of character, because not every city, folks, is represented by people like the ones that are sitting at this horseshoe, present one being accepted. So, with that little observation, I'd like to call on the presentation for the 2012 citizen survey results. Would you like to make some introductory comments, Mr. Clowers?
Very brief. Doug Dollar, Budget Director, is here along with the consultant with the company that performed the citizen survey, and it looks like they've got a lot of good information for you. So, I'll turn it over to our consultant.
Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, I'm Chris Tatham with ETC Institute. It's a pleasure to be back. I was here about a year ago to give you an update on what your residents think about the quality of city service delivery. If you're not familiar with our firm, our firm specializes in doing community surveys for city and county governments across the country. During the, just the past six or seven years, we've surveyed over a million and a half people in more than 600 cities. So, as I go through the presentation today, I'm going to talk about some things in context of what we see going on elsewhere in the country. The good news is the results for Oklahoma City are very positive, just in light of what the Vice Mayor said. You have a lot of good things going on in Oklahoma City. What I'm going to do today is kind of walk you through the purpose and methodology of the survey. I know you're already familiar with that, but just to recap that, so you can kind of use this as a tool to balance the information that you get from any other sources. Most communities like Oklahoma City use this as a basis of getting objective input from the general public. You know, too often, public processes are dominated by special interest groups, and sometimes it's difficult to really understand at the end of the day what are the needs of the average citizen out there, and how well are you meeting those needs? So, I commend the city to commit, for its commitment for doing this, to really make sure that the average citizen on the streets's interests are represented in your decision-making processes. I'm going to give you our major findings up front, and I'm going to walk through how we got there, and certainly if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at the end. As far as the purpose of the survey, I know you're all familiar with the fact that this is really designed to give you an objective assessment for how well you're delivering key city services. You've used it for a number of years to set priorities, both in budget and also resource allocation, and also give you a sense to how you're doing over time. So, I'll be able to show you some of the changes just from this year from last year so you can see how some of the decisions you've made have impacted the expectations that the public has for city services. As far as the methodology is concerned, this year's survey was done exactly the way previous surveys have been conducted. We administered the survey to a random sample of 1,200 households in the city. The results aren't perfect. They have an accuracy of about plus or minus 2.8% at the 95% level of confidence. That just means if we did the survey 100 times, 95 times out of 100, we get these same results within about plus or minus 3%. So, it's very good, but again, not perfect information. The survey is administered by mail and phone in both English and Spanish, and when you look at the demographic composition of the people who responded to the survey, it closely nears the demographic composition of the city's actual population. It also generally reflects the density of the city's population. This map just shows the location of where respondents live, so we feel very good about the sample, that when you look at the results, these results really do reflect what the average person in the community thinks about city services and priorities. With that said, these are the major conclusions for this year's survey. Bottom line is residents generally have a very positive perception of the city, and even more importantly, residents definitely think the city's moving in the right direction. Unlike most communities around the country, which are actually seeing their numbers decrease with regard to people's perceptions of where their cities are going, Oklahoma City is definitely moving in the right direction. You're doing a great job of equitably distributing services throughout the city, and you're setting the standard in a number of areas, and I'll show you where you really stack up favorably compared to other communities. And the overall indicators have improved. Many of the specific indicators have stayed about the same, but that's actually a favorable finding in this climate where nationally we've seen most of the ratings for city services dropping. Finally, it's the big surprise, I guess it's not a surprise, but the top priority, maintenance continues to be that, but you'll see as we go through the results, your satisfaction level with maintenance have actually been sustained, and that actually surprised me. I drove around town yesterday and today, and you've got a lot of projects undergoing, which I think shows that you're responding to these concerns that residents have had, but usually when cities respond at a level that the cities responded, satisfaction typically goes down rather significantly during the construction phase, and the fact that your results have stayed about the same, I think is a very favorable finding. So, with that, let me kind of walk through how we got to those findings. The first one is just the general perception that residents have of the city is very positive. We have a number of key, what I call strategic indicators on the survey that are used to assess the health of communities, everything from the image, the quality of life, how well the city's planning for growth, perceptions of your downtown and so forth, and you'll see that for all of the areas that were assessed on the survey, none of the areas have more than 20% dissatisfaction. You'll see feeling of safety actually has the most dissatisfaction, about 19%, so that's an area to continue watching. It's my understanding you're probably going to be adding more police and other things, but I think that's one of the areas in the survey that you at least want to pay attention to so it doesn't become an issue in the future. But overall, only 7% of the residents surveyed were dissatisfied with the overall quality of city services. That's the third item from the That's the third item from the bottom. So, anyone who complains about services, you know, there's a group out there that doesn't like how well you provide services, but for every one person that complains, you'll see that the positivity percentages, the 14 of 52, they're 66 percent of the population, two out of three, give you favorable ratings. So, almost a 10-to-one ratio of positives to negatives. So, the city's doing very good in that regard. In addition, when it comes to how things have changed since last year, you'll see a number of areas have improved rather significantly. The overall satisfaction with city services increased 2 percent. You'll see there were significant improvements with regard to the appearance of the city, the city's image, how well the city's planning for growth, perceptions of downtown. All of those items improved by 3 percent or more. Quality of life also increased a little bit, but it wasn't a statistically significant improvement. Feeling of safety dropped 1 percent, which was not a significant decrease either. But in general, people feel better about living in the city this year than they did a year ago, which is a great finding, given that most people in most communities around the country feel the opposite way in other communities I visit. In addition, when it comes to the direction that the city is moving, one of the key indicators we ask on the survey is whether or not people think that this is a city that's moving in the right direction, and how they kind of rate your performance in that regard, whether it's excellent, good, or poor, or fairly, or very poor. You'll notice that it's highlighted on here that 43 percent of the residents surveyed gave excellent ratings for the direction the city is headed. Another 40 percent gave good, so a total of 83 percent. And that's high, but what really stands out to me is the high percentage of people are giving a five rating. In most communities, there's maybe 15 to 25 percent of residents give a rating of five as far as the direction of the community. People feel really passionately here about the direction the city's headed. Only 7 percent don't think the city's headed in the right direction, so you have over an 11-to-one ratio of positives to negatives. So, you're clearly doing some things right to make residents feel so strongly about the direction you are moving. In addition, when we took a look at how that has changed compared to a year ago, not only do residents generally feel that this is a better place to work now than a year ago, you'll see that the percentage of residents who thought the city's moving in the right direction went from 76 percent, which was a high rating last year, getting three out of four to 83 percent this year. It's one of the most significant changes in the survey, and I really think that that's a leading indicator for what's to come. People think you're doing a lot of the right things now, and they'll pay dividends for you in the future. Next thing we looked at is just how well you stack up compared to other communities. And on these same indicators, you notice that these blue arrows pointing up show that you rate significantly above other large communities across the country when it comes to issues like has people rated this as a place to live, as a place to raise children, as a place to work, all significantly better, even as a place to retire. When it comes to how well you're planning growth, phenomenal difference. At the typical large community in the United States, only about 1 in 3 residents think that that government and that city is planning for growth well. It's almost 3 out of 4 here. So, again, the way you're planning for the future, the things that are happening in this community, people are very positive about that. So, you may get negative feedback about how you're planning, but the vast majority of residents think you're doing it right. In addition, you see the overall quality of city services. In most communities, fewer than half the residents in large cities think their local government does that well, at 46 percent. You'll see here in Oklahoma City, 2 out of 3 residents are 66 percent. So, to be 20 percent above the national average is a significant accomplishment. It's not just as, you're not just doing a little bit better than most communities, you're doing much better than most communities, and you have a lot to be proud of when we look at these key indicators.
Because it seems like kind of a strange anomaly, though, on that last slide, that the overall quality of life in the city would be less than the national average.
Well, you know, overall quality of life is a function of a lot of things, not just city services. It comes into everything with, you know, people's pay levels, the entertainment available, and things like school districts. There's so many other factors that go into that. Ironically, there are some communities that get great quality of life ratings, and then their local government gets very poor ratings. And so, I think your contribution to quality of life is certainly having a positive impact, given the fact that people very good, feel very good about the local government, but the local government isn't the only thing that affects the quality of life. So, I think you can feel good about the contribution the city is making to that, that issue.
Can I ask you a question on that same, on that same chart that Ms. Sawyer asked? On the how well the city is planning for growth part, do you probe that question about why people think we're doing well, what part of planning? Because I run into, as, I run into problems where it doesn't appear to me that we are doing a good job sometimes about planning, and I want to know why, I'd like to know why 7 out of 10 people think we're doing a great job.
On this survey, unfortunately, we don't. You know, part of this survey, it's kind of like getting a physical, a health checkup from your doctor. You have a lot of general tests, and if they find a problem, then you need to look at that a little more detail. Same sort of thing, if you're really super healthy in an area, you might not know from that. So, there may be some additional follow-up that may be done. You can do additional surveying or focus group, but unfortunately, from this survey, we just know you're doing a really good job. We can't necessarily say why.
What would we have to do to find the underlying reason for that? I have some personal ideas about why people think that we're doing a good job in growth, but I, it'd be nice to have those validated or exposed as.
It's possible in a future survey that we do, we could perhaps include some questions about elements of planning and see which one of those, and compare those to other communities. That's certainly one option. You know, today, I probably couldn't give you a real definite answer, but that's certainly one way to possibly look at it or approach the issue.
Thanks.
The other thing we look at in this survey is generally how well you're delivering services across the city. Especially in a city this large, one of the challenges is, is are you equitably providing services? I'm not going to go through all the maps. There's an extensive series of maps in your report, but one of the things that we're looking at particularly is just the overall indicator of overall how satisfied our residents with city services. And what I'm always looking for, do you have any areas in the city that get rated red or orange? In other words, that are just dissatisfied with the quality of service? And you don't have any. In fact, the entire city is almost in blue. You've got a couple of places that are kind of giving more of a neutral rating, but for the most part, regardless of where you live in the city, people feel pretty good and about the same about the overall quality of city service delivery. While there are some differences for specific services, this is a real good indicator that overall, you're doing a very good job of meeting the needs of people regardless of where they live. In a big city geographic like this, that's very difficult to do. The next thing we looked at are just some of the specific services. The overall indicators show improvement, but what we found on some of the specific services that were rated this year, that frankly, things have stayed about the same. And I think that shows that people believe you're on the right course, but some of the investments haven't been finished yet, and so you haven't necessarily seen the expectations met or change at this point in time. There's a number of questions we ask on the survey. I'm just going to go over some of the highlights. These are the major categories of city services that were assessed. You can see fire, ambulance, police. I won't read the complete list to you, but as you come down to the bottom, you see maintenance of city streets is the one area where we have the highest level of dissatisfaction. And anytime you have twice as many people dissatisfied as you do satisfied, clearly that's a concern. That number hasn't changed dramatically, but I know that's one of the reasons that you've been investing heavily. It usually takes a few years, from my experience, to change those numbers around, but once your projects start getting completed, that's when you probably see the fact that these, you'll see expectations begin to be met. So, the fact that people right now feel good about the direction of the city suggests that your investments are in the right areas, but at this point in time, they haven't seen their streets completed, and there's a lot of construction going on. When we looked at how things have changed compared to, or actually how you stack up nationally, you'll notice customer service, and I think this is one of the things to kind of commend your employee base. Most communities, only about 4 out of 10 residents feel good about the customer service they get from a local government that's large, like the city of Oklahoma City. Here, you have 60 percent. It's a 17 percent difference. So, clearly, the culture here of your employees and the way that they respond to citizen needs is setting the standard. You also see the way you communicate. You're 13 points above the national average in the way you communicate with residents. So, hats off in those areas. You'll see water utility services trails a little bit behind. So does Parks and Recreation, but what's interesting about your Parks and Recreation is there's not a lot of dissatisfaction. These numbers are based on the percentage of people who give positivity ratings of 4 and 5. When we look at your Parks and Recreation numbers, there's a lot of people who give like a neutral response or a 3. In other words, they haven't had a real good experience, they haven't had a real bad experience. And one of the things I'm going to show you in a little bit is information is actually one of the issues that's rising to the surface. And what we found is the more people know about a good system, the more likely they are to go from a 3 to a 4. So, you can change somebody who's kind of neutral with information and cause them to become a 4. You can't do that to somebody who's had a bad experience. So, I think there's opportunities, just with information and awareness, for you to improve your Parks and Recreation ratings. And you can see the last one, maintenance of streets. You trail there 12 percentage points. And the real key area there, though, is major streets, which probably also is affected by your highway system and the interstates. When you look at neighborhood street ratings, you're actually on par with most other large communities. When it comes to the trends from last year, you'll notice that there were almost no changes in any of the areas that were assessed. In fact, you can see statistically, each of the areas in 2012 measured exactly the same way it did a year ago. Those slight deviations are really just a matter of a few tenths of a point. So, you pretty much held your own over the last year. Most communities have seen decreases during the last year, so given the fact that it's a turbulent time for the nation, you've held on very well. When we looked at all of the areas that were assessed on the survey, this was probably the biggest surprise for me, is because I've never seen such stability in ratings. There are 77 areas that were rated. 63 of them essentially stayed the same. In other words, the change was positive to negative was less than 3 percent. We saw 7 areas increase by more than 3 percent, and 7 decreased by more than 3 percent. These are the areas that had the biggest improvement, and hats off to the city for preventing snow last year. You can see that that had a, a big impact on people's perceptions of snow removal. That was up 8 percent. So, whatever you did to make sure it didn't snow, keep on doing that. The fact that the direction the city is headed is up 7 points, that's really a leading indicator. That's usually what happens, that people feel good about where you're going, and their expectations are likely to follow that in the future. You see image, appearance, how well you're planning for growth also improved significantly, and even the city's website saw a 4 percent boost in perceptions of its usability and its satisfaction with that. When it comes to areas that decreased, you can see that in forcing, forcing the mowing and trimming of grass on private property was down 4 percent. Condition of city street pavement markings was down. Much of that is probably a function of the fact you have a lot of construction going on. You can see rec centers, perceptions of response time for police officers, neighborhood street conditions, availability of Parks and Recreation information, and local ambulance service kind of round out the areas that we saw decreases. But for the most part, things were very, very stable this year. As far as where to invest, or what the top issues are that will make a difference to residents over the next couple of years, not a real surprise, it continues to be streets. But what's so pronounced here in Oklahoma City about the street issue is that more people pick it as a top choice than anything else combined top three choices. You'll see that 69 percent, the next issue, traffic flow, police services are a distant second. But you can see that there's growing concern, I shouldn't say concern, but a growing prioritization among a key group of people about the importance of police services. You'll see the percentage of people picking it as a top choice is actually the second most frequently number one choice among the areas that were assessed. And given that there are some issues, subtle issues about safety, I think that's an area to at least pay attention to as you move forward. Streets, though, is clearly still the top issue. And we put it into a formula that we have to help you kind of assess the return on investment, based on whether that investment be dollars, or just information, or resources. You can see maintenance of city streets is the issue that really resounds most positively with residents. They place the highest priority on it. It's also by far the lowest rated service. And that's really what, you'll tend to make a difference in people's overall perceptions when you invest in areas or educate people about issues where they place a lot of importance, but you're not doing as well at delivering the services. The next area, that kind of high priority, are all fairly equal, and you can see codes, transit, police services, and Parks and Recreation all fall into that next tier, obviously, along with traffic flow. And then we also have some charts and graphs in the report that if you're not, this is for people who like numbers and lists. I guess if you're left-brained, if you're a right-brained person and you like pictures, this is the same information. The only difference is, is you start in the bottom right quadrant, those kind of tells you what the top priorities are. So, the things that are to the farthest, you know, to the farthest right and to the bottom, the further right they are, the more important they are. Further to the left, the less important they are, and if they're below that kind of horizontal line, indicates that the ratings tend to be lower. So, in this case, you see maintenance of streets is over to the far right. It's also the farthest to the bottom, which indicates it's the top issue. And then you kind of work your way around counterclockwise. Just kind of summarizing the top priorities, I won't do all the analysis that we did in the report, but you can see maintenance of streets was the top issue overall. Within some of the other categories that we assessed, on maintenance, it was the maintenance of streets and neighborhood streets. Sometimes it's other aspects of maintenance, but clearly, it's a street-related issue here. Within Parks and Recreation, it was your walking and biking trails, and also, interestingly, the availability of information. That will probably have a positive impact. Just letting people know what you have available is probably going to make a difference, and the fact that you have a lot of 3 ratings reinforces that finding when we looked at the data and did more analysis with it. And then finally, on code enforcement, enforcing the mowing and trimming of grass and the cleanup of debris on private property will also be the area within code enforcement to emphasize over the next year or two. So, just to summarize, this is the same chart I put up at the preview, at the beginning of the presentation. I want to congratulate the city for basically moving forward during a period when our nation really is having some challenges and really causing residents to feel so passionately about the direction the city's moving in. It's very, very rare to have 43 percent of your residents give you a rating of 5 out of 5 with the direction that you're moving, and have 83 percent altogether feel that you're moving in the right direction. You've got to be doing something right. So, the indicators here really suggest that this city's on the right course. You've sustained the overall ratings compared to a year ago, but I would anticipate that you'll see improvement as you start completing many of the projects that are underway. You'll probably see the ratings for individual areas improve in the next couple of years. So, that, it's a pleasure to be here. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but I'd be happy to answer them if you do.
Questions from the council.
When was this all in the field? When, when did?
This survey was done in June, the month of June.
Well, could you make sure that you do them in the future at any time that we're in the finals of the?
Yeah.
I mean, that's got to be a big help on the image side, at least. And satisfaction, all those things, they've got to, that's, I've never seen it higher personally than I saw during the, during the playoffs, the championship. Everybody was caught up in that, and it's bound to reflect itself somewhat.
And I'd say that probably affects your image and some of the other questions, the fact that you saw overall satisfaction with city services improve and things like that. I've actually, we've done this for other cities that have done well and been in championships, and they've seen the opposite impact, because what happens is suddenly, you have a lot of demands for city services because of what's going on. So, they might feel better about living in Boston or wherever the championship was taking place, but then they expect more, right?
Callous to plan for championships. Oklahoma City never had the chance before until this.
Thank you, Hon.
Can you, do you know the factors that entered into the response related to a good place to retire?
There's a number of factors there, and again, for this survey, we don't break it down, but we have done work for other communities to better understand those. It can be everything from the availability of medical facilities and the quality of medical facilities. It can be issues related to transportation for elderly. It can have to do with the housing prices and the affordability of the market for people. So, you know, there are many factors that go into that. Those are just a few, but I know the medical availability, affordability of housing, and the availability of transportation, those tend to be three of the dominant issues that tend to affect that.
And the issue about traffic flow, I think overall, the traffic has improved, the flow of traffic, especially since we've opened up the new I-40. And perhaps that's more in the area of the downtown with all the construction that's going on, but I was surprised by that not being a little bit higher. You know, I would like to make this general comment. I agree that this is a very favorable report, but for us to sit back and think, oh, we've accomplished all we need to, I think is, is potentially problematic, and I think we've just got more opportunities to continue to improve upon our city and never get complacent with respect to these types of responses.
Councilman Green, well, in regard to your comment about the ease of traffic flow, when you've got as much under construction, not only downtown but around the city, as we've got, people are going to complain about getting around. We've got lanes shut down where there might have been four lanes, it's down to two and We've got lanes shut down where there might have been four lanes, it's down to two and so forth. I'm sure that has a lot to do with it.
Thank you very much for your very good report, and I will look forward to seeing you in the future with similar reports and hopefully show the grades going up and not falling complacent as Councilman Green always challenges not to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, we have a presentation on the West Town Resources Center.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, Dan Strawn is here to make that presentation for us.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name's Dan Strawn. I'm with the Homeless Alliance, and I want to thank you for allowing us some time on your agenda today to hear about the first full year of operation of the West Town Homeless Resources Campus that this body, frankly, helped to build. I could have the next slide. I know you all have had a long morning, so I'm not going to go through all the things that the Homeless Alliance does, but one of the things we do is manage the campus. And there are three parts to the campus, the day shelter, the resource center, and the mobile medical dental clinics. Next slide, please. You can see many of you have been out to the campus to see it. You can see that we've tried to make it lovely. Clockwise from the upper left corner there, you see the entrance to the resource center with the playground for the children and the mobile medical clinic and the interior of the day shelter. As we talk about the campus, we'll talk about those three elements. And I'd like to begin with the day shelter. And here to talk about the day shelter is the day shelter manager, Mr. Mike Milner.
Thank you. As Dan said, my name is Mike Milner. I manage the day shelter. I work for City Care, and City Care is contracted by the Homeless Alliance to deliver the service of the day shelter. We have the privilege of serving a very unique population at the day shelter. Many of the folks that come to us on a daily basis are street homeless. We have about, on average, it's 278 guests that come to us every day, but the range of those numbers are anywhere between 250 and about 340, depending on the time of the month. And about 70%, 75% of that population are actually street homeless, not staying in a night shelter or in other some temporary arrangement, but actually physically on the streets, camping or under a bridge or down by the river or other places. And so we have some unique challenges that we face as a team as we seek to provide services to this population. And one of the main things that we try to do is to provide a practical service where people who are coming off the streets can get a meal, they can get some rest bite from the elements, and get a shower, they can have access to phones and computers and some of the other facilities that we provide. And many of our folks that come through the door are not engaged with other services, and they have multiple barriers to getting off the street and gaining employment or sustaining an income that enables them to live in a healthy way. Can we have the next slide? One of the main focuses that we try to work with, my team and I, is looking at housing. Obviously, for people who are on the streets, that's a key priority, is helping people to access housing. And this is a big challenge, but we've been delighted with some of the results that we've seen through the first sort of nearly year of operations, about 39 people now. It's a little more than that since that stat was put in, have gained permanent housing. And then through that, we've also been able to build relationships with various employment opportunities. And you see there, there's a list of different ways that people have gained some kind of employment. I think the most pleasing thing for me is seeing that 55 folks have come through and have got themselves a permanent job, which for many of these folks who are suffering with different health issues, mental health problems, overcoming some addictions, this is a real encouragement for us. Next slide, please. You'll see here on the next two slides, we've got a list of the services and activities that we're providing at the day shelter. As I mentioned, we provide some of the practical services for people, computers, the library. We have a small library available, showers and meals. And also, we're looking to engage people with job training. And we partner with TEAM on a monthly basis to get people through their program and looking at how they can get into employment. Job placement, we're working on GED prep, a class being provided at the day shelter for people who need to get ready to get to that point where they can get their GED. We also build in other activities that help people with different life issues. Some of those folks benefit from our recovery and A groups that come in, as well as we have a local church that comes in and provides a Bible study for those who are wanting that. And also, a key part of what my staff does is provide case management work for people. So we're looking to build relationships with individuals, identify what their needs are, and seek to link them with appropriate services. And on the next slide, you'll see some of the key partners that we have at the day shelter. One of the most important parts of what we're doing is seeking to partner with other agencies who deliver specialist services so that people can get the help they need in a very accessible way. So you'll see a list there of agencies. These agencies represent services in the field of healthcare, of testing for disease testing. We also have mental health services, substance abuse services, and the Veterans Administration in there as well, who are providing outreach to vets who are homeless coming into the day shelter and connecting them with the services that are provided through the VA. And then lastly, the next slide. One of the unique challenges that we have encountered as we opened up is that many folks who are homeless actually have a companion animal. And as we opened up the doors and invited people to come in, we realized as well that it wasn't just people that were needing some kind of support or help, because many of these folks who are on the streets have found that a dog, or in some cases, a parrot, has actually provided a level of support and companionship that's been valuable for their stability. And so we realized that we had two choices. We either kind of pushed the chaos away of having several dogs around the campus, or we embraced the problem. We decided to embrace the problem, and we have established a temporary kennel area, which you can see in the photograph there on the right. We've got some nice umbrellas, and we've cut out some gallon, 50-gallon barrels for dogs to go in. The owners are encouraged to take responsibility, they sign a policy. We help them with food, and they get water, and they take care of the areas themselves. So encouraging that aspect of ownership. But also, we're working with various different agencies to provide a more permanent solution. Some of those people would be OSU, OKC's Vet Tech Program, and also the Vet Science Program at OSU and the Humane Society. So we're partnering with these folks to try and find a better way to do this. But this is working for now, and certainly it makes a big difference to the folks coming to the day shelter.
How do the dogs and the parrot get along?
I'm sorry?
How do the dogs and the parrot get along?
You know, the parrot is one of the clients that Mike's folks have been able to house, and so he seldom visits anymore. But when he does, he does not go into the kennel. Well, as I mentioned, some of you may be wondering from Mike's accent where he's from. He's from the Shire of Birmingham in Alabama. So just if you recognize the accent. Second part of the campus, of course, is the Resource Center. While the day shelter has really only been open since, we opened August 15th, but we didn't really start taking stats until towards the end of September. The Resource Center actually opened in May of last year, so these are full-year statistics. In the Resource Center, we are focused on, but not exclusive to, families with children. We provide housing, wraparound case management services. We have homeless prevention. It's much, much more cost-efficient to prevent homelessness on the front end than it is to try and address it after a family becomes homeless. Also have job training and placement services in the Resource Center, as well as education and payee services. Next slide, please. From July 1 to June 30, the last fiscal year, we housed from the Resource Center 172 homeless families with children. We see 80 families per month, and we've enrolled 90 individuals in payee services, and then we've had 10 successful graduates of our job training program. Next slide. In the Resource Center, you can see we have a program called Coordinated Case Management that works exclusively with families with children. We have government, nonprofit, and faith-based agencies providing services. The members of the Coordinated Case Management Team include Healing Hands and Legal Aid, North Care for Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services, NSO for Housing, and Case Management Positive Tomorrows for Children's Services, Red Rock for Substance Abuse primarily, also some mental health services and housing, Holistic as Family Counseling, and then of course, YWCA is our Domestic Violence Expert on the team. In addition to those, we have Baptist Medical Dental Fellowship providing a pharmacy out of the Resource Center. VOA is doing the payee services, and that's been an extremely successful program for getting folks housed. TEAM is doing our job training and placement services. Salvation Army is providing utility assistance. DHS will join the team, Department of Human Services will join the team in October, and Urban League will join the team at the end of this month.
Dan, could you just explain payee services in a little bit more detail?
Okay. As Mike mentioned, many of our clients and guests have disabilities. Some of them have jobs. A payee service provider is an organizational entity that you can assign your financial benefits to, and that could be your paycheck. More often, it's social security supplemental income or social security disability income. And the truth of the matter is, in Oklahoma City, if you're getting SSI or SSDI and you're managing it carefully, you can be securely housed, even though for an individual, it's only $674 a month. The problem is with our clientele, with 36% reporting substance abuse issues, 25% reporting mental health issues, managing that money effectively can be really challenging. So what payee services do, you elect for VOA to be your payee. Your social security check goes directly to them. They pay your rent, your utilities, your consistent living expenses, and then they will provide you the remainder of the amount in what amounts to an allowance. And depending on your ability to sustain some level of independence, you may come pick up your allowance every day, or once a week, or for some of our more high-functioning guests, once a month. And it's not solely a bookkeeping, money-management service. They provide a lot of case management services. You know, I've watched them go out and acquire bicycles for their clients so they'll have I've watched them negotiate with a car company that had sold a real beater to a client for an extraordinarily high interest rate. She was able to get him out of that deal and get him into a more sustainable car payment. So they provide a lot of case management services. And the beauty of it is it enables those folks to stay housed sustainably. In addition, at the Resource Center, we've begun a partnership with OU's School of Social Work and OU's Price College of Business. Social Work students have been coming in all summer and interviewing our clients and guests, and really asking effectively two questions. If you had a job, what kind of job would you like to have? And digging a little deeper, what kind of job would you really be capable of doing? We'll take that data at the end of the summer, give it over to the students at the Entrepreneurship Center at OU, and they'll look at that data, look at the assets that we have at West Town, a commercial kitchen, a city block, all that kind of stuff, and try to determine what sorts of employment opportunities we can develop that will take advantage of those assets and be something that our clients could participate in for income. So for example, we have a lovely commercial kitchen. Could we develop a catering company and train our guests in food service so that they could get a job outside of the catering company and at the same time provide catering services? Because we have a kennel, and we have a lot of guests who care about animals, could we do a doggy daycare? Forty thousand cars come past us on I-40 every morning coming into the city. Could we do a doggy daycare and teach our guests dog grooming and vet tech and that kind of stuff? So we're working on that, because our current job training and placement programs are not having the outcomes that we really want them to. And I think part of the reason why is the model we need to look at more closely for folks with lots of disabilities is more like what Dale Rogers does with physically disabled and developmentally disabled, more like what Goodwill does, that kind of sheltered workshop model might be more effective for getting more of our folks employed. Next slide, please. And then the future also holds. We have coordinated case management for homeless families with children. We're seeing our homeless veterans members go up, and so we have developed a program that with different agency team members provides the same coordinated case management services to veterans and their families, especially those suffering from traumatic brain injury and PTSD. And we'll be implementing that hopefully in early November. So I just wanted to conclude. This is our first year of operation. We had a lot of things go well, and some things, like the dogs, be a big surprise. But you know, providing a safe, warm, dry place to be for 300 unsheltered homeless people every day, housing 172 homeless families with children in a year, you know, none of that would have happened if not for the involvement of this body. And some of you in particular provided a great deal of free consultation services. Anyway, we deeply appreciate the support the City of Oklahoma City, and particularly this body, has given to us over the year, and we hope to continue to be able to make you proud. Any questions?
Dan, thank you. Questions from the council?
Yes. Dan, thank you for the report. The relationship between the Resource Center and the day shelter, when you look at the numbers, for example, going back to the day shelter, 39 guests were placed in permanent housing, but yet from the Resource Center, 172 homeless families with children were housed.
Right.
Can you reconcile that? I mean, people who go to the Resource Center may not perhaps access the day shelter.
That is correct, and vice versa. So the day shelter is essentially open to anybody, and we really work pretty hard to keep it that way, very low barrier to entry. Because as Mike said, about three-quarters of our folks in the day shelter aren't being served anywhere else, and that's for reasons of serious mental illness, serious substance abuse issues, and they have animals, which nobody else will tell you. So in the Resource Center, because we're focused on families with children, that environment in the day shelter is really not that appropriate for children. So even when families with children show up at the day shelter, we try to push them into the Resource Center as fast as we can.
Well, one other question then. Access to the Resource Center, even after they've obtained, say, permanent housing?
Yes.
It sounds like it may be important to them. Do you have permanent housing in the immediate area, or is there public transportation that allows individuals to access the Resource Center after they've obtained housing?
Absolutely. And we do have permanent housing. It's in scattered sites all across the city, from north to south and east to west. One of the things we're always looking for when we lease apartments to sublease to our families is, you know, are they on a Metro Transit route and grocery store within walking distance, those sorts of issues. And for our families in permanent housing that remain clients, you know, some of our families, they just need a one, two, three-month boost.
Okay.
And then we don't really see them that much anymore. But some of our families are ongoing clients, we see them every month. And we continue to provide those kinds of case management services that hopefully prevent the issues that that cause them to become homeless.
Thank you. Chief Morris?
Dan, well, I got a question, but first let me say, I don't mean for my question to insinuate that you and the other organizations in town have all the resources that you need. But having said that, is it a fair assumption that between you and the other organizations that deal with those in need here in the city, anybody that needs help or wants help has got a place to go to find it?
You know, Councilman Morris, I'd agree with that within certain broad limits. If you're looking for basic needs, you know, food and shelter and warmth and that kind of stuff, yes. What we are, as a community, lacking are really three things. Adequate and effective substance abuse treatment, and this is not unique to Oklahoma City, mind you. So adequate and effective substance abuse treatment, adequate and effective mental health treatment, and then we're, as a city, about 800, 900 units short of housing for very low or no income individuals and families with serious barriers. So that's, we're really good at transitional housing, we're really good at emergency housing. We need to push forward on the permanent housing. You may know Tulsa, Mental Health Association Tulsa has a really fantastic model for that, that we're working with a really large group to see if we can't duplicate here.
Councilman Sayre?
Dan, could I ask you to talk a little bit about how the mobile clinic, medical clinic's working? And I know when we got started, we were going to make it available during the week for the residents and then also for the neighborhood. Is that working well?
You know, we haven't really done anything in our neighborhood except on the West Town campus. It has been out most weekends, often to rural communities, but it also goes, Baptist Medical Dental Fellowship has a, which is the actual owner of the mobile medical dental clinic, has a partnership with a really big church in northeast Oklahoma City, whose name I can't remember, Greater Mount Olive. And so they go, they're often out there with the Greater Mount Olive folks. We have not been successful yet implementing dental services out of the clinic, and we have, we have everything we need except the dentist.
I see. Why do you say you have not made any?
Dental services.
Okay.
And it's hard to, it's been hard to recruit a volunteer to provide those services. We're still working on it.
Yeah, Dan, I particularly just would like to thank you and your staff. It's been an amazingly successful year. I think there are lots of hills still to climb, but this is a facility that Oklahoma City did not have. And the fact that you're serving, that 70% of the folks that you're serving in the day shelter are coming to you from the street, and that we've been able to outreach and make accommodation for those barriers for them to come, I, you know, I just really appreciate everything that you've done, and I want to see us continue to work towards some, filling some of those other gaps, but this is a very wonderful step forward for Oklahoma City.
Thank you. And I did want to just mention that we're very interested and concerned about our place in the, in the community, in our sort of geographic neighborhood, and so whenever we are open, there's a uniformed off-duty Oklahoma City police officer on the campus, and we're pretty careful to make sure that his influence, our influence extends out beyond our street borders. And, you know, we go walk through with our neighbors and strongly encourage our neighbors, if they're having a problem with our guests, to let us know so that we can address that. And Mike and his staff with City Care have really done just a super job managing a notoriously challenging population.
Any further comments? Senior, thank you so much for coming down. Thank you for the report, and look forward to hearing a good report again next year as you keep moving forward. Thank you, Dan. All right, next up, we have, what, any comments on the Oklahoma City Fire Department report?
Well, we do have two city manager reports that were created in response to council requests about the fire department response to nursing home calls, and then about street maintenance expenditures and citizen satisfaction. If there's questions, I'm sure Chief Bryant or Eric Winger can join us and answer those.
I pre-warned Chief Bryant that I was probably going to ask a question, so I hope he's kind of headed this way. I hope you had, although you had a chance to read through that. One of the things that jumped out at me was that 50% of the calls that we're making to nursing homes were to provide assistance, typically lifting assistance of some kind. And, come on up here, chief. It just, which I think kind of substantiates what a lot of us have known all along, the requirement or the need for assistance on most of these calls, is that because the nursing home needed the assistance with the patient, or because IMSA needed assistance once they got there?
Well, as far as our involvement in that, we receive most of those requests from IMSA through IMSA. So, I mean, originally, obviously, the nursing home would generate the need for assistance, and then it'd be a situation where the IMSA unit would arrive and determine that further assistance was necessary, and that's why we would be notified in most of the cases.
I, you know, I'll discuss at the next NHTA trust meeting my questions to them on that, at that level, but I'm curious, we're talking about lowering the number of times you respond with them, so when we get the CAD system working and we get the protocols in place and so forth. I would hate to see us be successful in lowering the number of times you have to hit the street, but yet turn right around and have to go back to making those calls when IMSA gets there and needs assistance on it, especially if it's just, just physical assistance lifting some of these people. So I would ask you to monitor that very closely, and I don't want to, I think it's good that we're looking at a system that's going to lower the number of times you have to go, but I don't want to turn around and have to have you go after they got there and decided, yeah, they do need some type of physical assistance on it. But I appreciate the information on it. I think it just reinforced what I had suspected all along. I think you drew your numbers off of a reporting system that simply is a coded system.
Correct.
I don't think, I still have some personal ideas about some of the real reasons or some of the underlying reasons inside those codes that they went, but I appreciate the report on it.
Welcome. And just, this report alone would indicate that initially, like a 5% reduction before we ever really get fully into the interface and into the medical priority dispatch system that should be in place here very shortly.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions on either of the city managers' reports? Seeing none, it's a point in our agenda for citizens to be heard. I have information that one citizen wishes to be heard, and that's the only card we have. I'd like to call Fannie Bates to come forward.
Okay. I'm sorry.
If you would, Fannie, give your name and address and address to council.
Yes, my name is Fannie Bates. I live at 1116 Northwest 27th. I'm a highly qualified elementary teacher, and I have a master's degree in public health. I came here today to talk about that Los Angeles has passed a resolution asking the EPA to enforce the Clean Air Act. The Clean Air Act is not being enforced. Oklahoma City has a real problem with clean air. We're getting ready to build an elementary school in downtown Oklahoma City, and I've been having an asthma attack almost every day this summer, and those kids are going to have asthma too, if we don't straighten up this air problem that we have. So that's something I'd like for you to look at, what Los Angeles is doing. But I want to respond to the people talking about the homeless center. We've invested $5 million of our tax money into this homeless center, and it's very frustrating to me to see the way they hire rich people and people from England and Australia to come in here and try to serve our homeless people, and I don't think they have the compassion that you would have if you hired, if they hired more local people. There's a new research study that just came out that shows that when wealthy people look at a poor person, they don't really see them. They don't identify with them the way other, even when a chimp looks at another chimp, he has a warm place that lights up in his brain. And when a rich person looks at another rich person, a warm place lights up in their brain. But when a rich person looks at a poor person, that warm place doesn't light up, and I think it's causing a problem. We have about 5,000 homeless people in Oklahoma City. We have 16,000 empty houses, and these folks have only been able to place 39 people in a house. We have 16,000 empty homes, and they've only been able to find a house for 39 people? There's something wrong. In other cities, they have, they've gotten their lawyers to study this. There's a way that they can take eminent domain over mortgages that are, where people are not paying their mortgage. The city can take eminent domain over that mortgage and take over that property. Like all these people who live in other places who own property here and they're not taking care of it, the legal opinions have been done in other cities that show that they have the right to take over that property. The City of Oklahoma City could take over that property. He said, "We need 900 units of housing." We've got 16,000 empty houses. There's no reason we can't come up with 900 units of housing. They're just sitting there and let the homeless people come in and help refurbish those houses and put some people in that are homeless. Thank you.
Thank you, Fannie. We have executive session. We will recess until then, and then we shall return.